Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the Yukon City Council's special meeting for Mar- I'm sorry, so for March the 29th, 2016 to order. Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Smystrela.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
First item is item one, and that's where I would consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council and convene into executive session to discuss the pending investigation, claim, or action with the city attorney as provided for in Title 25 OS 2003, Section 307b, four. Have a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
So at this time, we're going to convene into an executive session. We would also like to invite Tammy De Spain, Jim Crosby, Mike Sigler, and Frank Crawford, please. Oh, I'm sorry, and Mr. Tony Puckett as well. At this time, I would consider a motion to adjourn from the executive session and reconvene as the Yukon City Council, please.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll.
Russell.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Smystrela.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
Alberts.
Here. I would now like to read the minutes, excuse me, of the executive session. While an executive session only, the items on the agenda were discussed, and no action was taken, and no votes were cast. From our executive meeting, we have a statement that will be provided. Are there copies that'll be provided? Jen, are they available now?
After you make the statement.
Okay, so after I make this statement later, a written copy will be available at the back? Okay, so a written copy will be available. I'm going to read this statement, and then make a couple of comments, and then we'll take a short recess and take a few questions. Basically, what this is going to tell us is there is an ongoing investigation that is continuing. Some information has been provided, but there's additional information that we need. It's important for us to gather all that information in order to be able to provide it. We're making some progress, but let me read this, and then we will go forward, like I say, with a short recess. This is a March 29th, 2016, for immediate release. The city has hired an accounting firm, Crawford and Associates, forensic accountants, Frank Crawford, that specializes in governmental accounting and the fiscal reporting environment, specifically municipal finance and budgeting matters. They are currently in the process of determining our financial position and condition at two points in time, one being the current position, and the other being that as of June the 30th, 2015, which was the date of our most recent financial statement and audit. The information has come to the council's attention in December of 2015, which has caused the council to seek the employment of the forensic accountant to review the city's financial position. The forensic accountant is currently in the middle of the process. Therefore, the council is unable to provide any more specifics at this time other than to say that we now believe that the city is in what we consider to be a deep financial crisis. The financial statement audit has shown a trend of annually incurring more expenses the last four years than what we were earning in revenue, or in other words, spending more money each year than the city collects. Fortunately for the city, we have money saved for these situations, but we are nearing the point where the reserve funds are depleted. The city of Yukon has a reserve account that must equal 25% of the previous year's budget. Our ordinances state that these funds are only to be used in emergencies and with approval of the city council. In October of 2015, approximately $1.3 million was used from the capital improvement bond fund to pay for general operating expenses. This requisition was not approved by the city council. Capital improvement bond funds are only to be used for capital improvement projects. Money from our reserve account was later used to pay the Corps of Engineers bill that was originally supposed to be paid by the capital improvement bond fund. The extent to which the funds have been depleted and the action that led to their depletion are currently under review by the forensic accountant. As soon as we receive the financial, I'm sorry, as soon as we receive the final review and analysis, a more detailed statement will be reported and provided. We feel that we need to reissue our audit for 2015 fiscal year, and because of that, we feel that adjustments will need to be made to the 2016 budget. The council has received information regarding some recent purchasing procedures. Per city ordinance, purchases in excess of $25,000 must go out for competitive bid unless under state contract. According to the research, city employees were directed to recommend several purchases over $25,000 without any competitive bids. An example is a $600,000 purchase, which was spent on polycarts manufactured in Canada. This information is currently being compiled. Once it is finished, the information will be provided to the district attorney's office for their review. We would like to add that our recent water and sewer rate evaluation has nothing to do with the problems of our budget. Our water and sewer rates were changed from summer and winter rates to a single rate in October of 2015. The change to a single rate does not equal our cost to provide water and sewer services to the citizens. Our finances have serious problems, but we are determined to do the right thing for the city and get to the bottom of the problem. Our citizens deserve to know what is happening. We are committed, as a council, to our citizens, and we will be transparent throughout the process, sharing information as it becomes available. We will have to take some drastic measures, but we believe that Yukon will not only endure, but be stronger as we work our way through this process. We love our community, and we are proud to serve our community. The city council is continuing to investigate our financial condition, and more information will be released as the investigation continues. So that is the statement that we have for release. Those statements will be made available to you. At this time, we're going to take about a five, maybe a five-minute recess. If you all, the media, have questions that they would like to ask, I'm glad to answer what I can. But I want to be clear before we go off, that the accountant is continuing to dig into this information. They are collecting additional information that needs to be provided. All that information needs to be given to us, so we can give it to you. So I do not want to make any inaccurate statement. I want to provide, and all these people are committed to providing the answer, and providing part of an answer is not a good thing. We want to share with you a complete, detailed information. I intend to gather that report for you. I intend for it to be released to the community. Everybody needs an opportunity to look at it, review it, and make their own determination based upon the forensic accountant that we're paying to collect and provide this information to you all. So we will now have a recess for about five minutes. Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the meeting, and we'll take up the item number three, I'm sorry, we just dealt with that, regarding a statement from the mayor regarding the financial status of the city of Yukon. That's what we just dealt with during our brief recess and the reading before the recess. The next item is item four, and that's to consider approving ordinance number 1335, an ordinance which provides an amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Section 114-34 by providing for the future increase in fees for water, service, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Could I make a motion to table this until the first meeting in April, until we can go over a little bit of this? A few items a few times more?
Is there a do we need a second in order to discuss that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. A discussion. You want to discuss it, Mr. Russell? Now, what's being discussed right now is the idea to
Table.
To table it.
I just feel like there's a little more we need to all understand on this before we go forward. I do know we need an increase, but I'm concerned about where we're at. I just feel like we need to all study this a little further before we make a vote on this today.
Okay. When's our next meeting? April the 2nd? April 5th?
5th. 5th, I think.
Next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Correct.
Week from today.
Okay. Mr. McCarron? Any comments?
No, I not any. I mean, I read the stuff a little earlier, so I think I'm a little more, you know, but not all of us have got a chance to analyze it, I think, as much as we could have.
Okay. Ladies?
I'd like a chance to study it a little further and ask additional questions.
Okay. Any other comments? Then call the roll.
Smystrela.
To table it. Oh, do we need to have a time?
He said till April 1st, or to the first meeting in April, was in the motion, as I understood it.
Yes, please.
That's correct.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Next item is item five. That's consider approving ordinance number 1336, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending Section 114-35 by providing for sanitary sewer rates for the use and maintenance of the sanitary sewer system and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
No, this one.
Okay, discussion. Okay, discussion? Discussion? This would be an appropriate time if there are any comments from the public regarding item number five and the sanitary sewer rates. If someone has a comment that they would like to make? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Just all around, we don't need to make a comment. My name is Bill Bendo. I live at 128 West Olympic. My first question is, if we're going to table the motion on the water, why would you not table the one in the sewer? The sewer is less equitable.
Sir, this is an opportunity for you to talk and share information with us. It's not, that matter has been tabled, it's off the table. Okay. It's procedural. I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Sure, no, 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 that's fine.
We're glad to hear your comments, and we welcome those, too.
Well, my comment then is that the, it appears to me that the water rates are probably more fair, more equitable than the, not counting summertime rates when we're watering, than the sewer rates. The sewer rates appear to be, and the garbage for some matter, but that's part of the, not part of the deal, seems to be less equitable than water. So I would suggest if one needs to be looked at, perhaps the other should be looked at and better understood also. It does feel a bit like a reaction to budget difficulties, that we can't make payroll next month. I don't know how much total revenue we're going to generate, excess revenue we're going to generate, but I hope we can make payroll next month, and since we have a new city manager and a new auditor, so we can actually get a handle on revenue, expenses, and cash flow, which we obviously don't have a handle on, then it would seem sensible to me to put in at least another week to look at this.
Okay.
And I'll be quiet now.
No, no, don't leave, don't leave. Is, was the planning session, was it videoed? And will it be played on TV? Okay, so it'll be, so it will be in the archive for the city council? No, 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 the planning, the study session. It wasn't videoed? Okay. When we come, well, I'll tell you what, if it wasn't, then I think that it would be appropriate at this time to share the information. Were you here before for the study session, sir?
No, John, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Then I appreciate your words, because I think that we need to share with you tonight. There's some information about the sewer. Let us share that information with you. If you have additional comments after we share that information, we'd welcome you to come back to the podium. So let us share a little bit of information.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So Tammy De Spain, city manager, she has some information that was shared earlier in a work and study session about the water and the sewer. I'm going to allow her to share that information, and sir, if you have questions, we'll take that up after she shares this information. Is that okay? Yes, sir, thank you.
Do you want to do your sewer?
Yeah, I think, I think let's do sewer. If we're going to vote on this tonight, let's do that, and then we'll do the water next week whenever we, or at the next meeting, whenever we work on the water.
Okay. Do we get it up on the TV?
Is there a way to get it up on the TV? Will the people who are watching TV be able to see, and then will they still be able to hear Tammy? Thank you, sir.
If you'll please watch or monitor. I will, we've got the presentation up here, so you can see exactly what we discussed during the study session. I'm going to talk about the sewer rate evaluation and the proposed rates. The city of Yukon sewer cost summary was taken during July 1st, 2015, through January 31st, 2016. We had 556,341 gallons of water that went into the sewer. No. That's all right. The treatment and supply management fee costs us 85 cents per thousand gallons. The annual capital maintenance reserve costs 52 cents per thousand gallons. The annual distribution cost costs 52 cents for every 1,000 gallons. The annual utility billing is 74 cents per thousand gallons, and the annual administration cost is 11 cents per thousand gallons, bringing the total to $2.74 is what it costs the city for sewer. In our next slide, we show what we build, what the city of Yukon build to our residents from 2015, the beginning of our fiscal year, 2015, to January 31st, 2016. In July, we build 209,000. In August, we build 222,000. In September, we build 213,000. And in October, we started with our new sewer rates. We used to have two different rates every year. We had a winter and a summer rate. In October, that was changed to a rate that was, that is year-round. So it's a one-time rate, and our income that we billed was 228,000. In November, it was 197,000. In December, it was 156,000, and in January, it was 185,000, bringing our total to $1,414,781.82. You can see on this slide that in October, when it was changed to one rate, as you know, we're always two months behind or a month behind. So that's why October, it looks good, and then in November, you see it drop down to 197,000 and 156,000. So you can see where we were losing money, changing that over to the one-time rate.
I have a question. And if you have a question, we'll ask during the are the sewer rates affected by season?
No, not now. Not, not at the point right now.
Usage. Water is higher in the summer than
Yes, yes, they were, when they were based on two different rates per year, which summer and winter, that was based on you water more during the summer and you, you know, less in the wintertime, and so your usage is different.
But sewer-wise, do we use the sewer more in the summer than in the winter?
No, because it goes on the, it goes on the, usually it goes on your lawn and doesn't run off like it does in the wintertime.
Okay. So that, I guess that's my question is, is the numbers go down in the winter months? Is that because we don't use the sewer as often as we do in July?
No, you don't water the, we didn't, you don't water the yard during these months. Well, we were, we were low this last year because of all the rain that we got last spring.
Okay.
So it's because the, the reason why it turned low and started being low in October is because the rate was changed.
Okay.
And
But there's not a two-tier rate. After October the 15th, there's not a summer rate or a winter rate for water. There's not a summer rate, winter rate for sanitary sewer.
Right.
October 15th is one rate, year-round.
Okay.
Okay, our current sewer rates are at $7.66 for the minimum, which is zero to 4,000 gallons. These are all our current rates. From 4,001 gallon to 12,000 gallons, you are charged $4.50. You're charged $4.75 for anything in between 12,000 and 1 gallons to 20,000 gallons. You're charged $5 for 20,000 gallons and 1 gallon and in between 50,000 gallons. And you're also charged $5.25 for 50,001 gallon and up. Those are all the current rates. The next slide shows what our utility bill comparisons are for our sewer rates. You've got 2,300 gallons in consumption, 7,900 in consumption, 12,000 gallons in consumption, and 20,000 gallons in consumption. On that first line, you will see what Yukon's current rates are, and below, you will see the other cities that we compare to where we are. We compared it with Mustang, Piedmont, Edmund, El Reno, Oklahoma City, Bethany, Moore, Midwest City, and Norman. The average for the 2,300 consumption in gallons is $13.44. The consumption average for 7,900 gallons is $33.4. The average for 12,000 gallons in consumption is $48.61. And for 20,000 gallons, the average is $79.18. What we are proposing to do will show you that until we get to the 20,000 gallons, we are under the rate for the average. Like I said, the average for the 2,300 gallons is $13.44, and Yukon is proposing to raise that to $10. For 7,900 gallons, the average is $33.4. We are proposing to raise it to $27.55. The average for 12,000 gallons is $48.61. We are proposing to raise that to $46. The average for 20,000 gallons of consumption is $79.18. We are proposing to raise that to $84. So until you get to 20,000, we are lower than the average for the sewer rate. Regarding our evaluation, we show that our sewer usage was 556,341 gallons. The cost of that was $2.74, $2.74 per thousand gallons. That brings that total $1,524,374. If you take what our cost is, and you bring it down, and you show what we build in sewer, we have, we build $1,414,781. That shows a deficit of $109,593. That shows that we lost money from what our cost was to what we build out. We are proposing to raise the base, the current base, and only the base fee to seven, from $7.66 to $10. We have approximately 8,000 residential customers, and if you times that, times 12, the 8,000 of our residential customers, times the increase of $2.34, times 12 months, it's $224,640. If you take away what we lost this last year, which was $109,593, that gives us a total of $115,047. These are our rates of what they currently are. These were effective in October. The cost is $7.66 for zero to 4,000 gallons. The cost for 4,001 gallons to 12,000 gallons is $4.50 per each thousand gallons. $4.75 per each thousand gallons for 12,001 gallon to 20,000 gallons. $5 per each thousand gallons for 20,001 gallon to 50,000 gallons, and $5.25 per each thousand gallons for 50,001 gallon and over. We are not changing any of the, we are only changing the base rate, because that's what our proposal is. It will change from $7.66 to $10. All of the other ranges, we are not changing those. Our proposed sewer rates, we're going from $7.66 to $10 for zero to 4,000 gallons. As I stated before, we are not changing any of the ranges above. $4.50 per thousand gallons will remain at 4,001 gallon to 12,000 gallons. The next range will, range will stay the same at $4.75 per each thousand gallons. That is for 12,001 gallon to 20,000 gallons. The next range is $5 per each thousand gallons for 20,001 gallon to 50,000 gallons. And the last range is $5.25 per each thousand gallons for 50,001 gallon and over. And that concludes the presentation.
Sir, if you have any additional statements you'd like to make to the council, we encourage you to come forward and do so at this time.
Regarding just the sewer issue.
Yes, sir, you need to, sorry, everyone wants to hear you on TV, so.
I seriously doubt that. The, thanks for the explanation, and that was part of the problem, is trying on short notice to be able to compare this to that. It, when people who water the yards are subsidizing those who don't, that's, we understand that. The only question we would, or start, comment we would consider now has to do with the sewer issue, though, nothing on the statement that you made earlier.
I'm sorry, the statement, sir.
The statement regarding the audit that's ongoing.
Yes, sir.
And we're not touching that right now.
That's the sewer, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. If you come forward with your name and your address, sir.
My name is Bill Walker.
You need to
My name is Bill Walker.
Thank you.
Live at 1428 Von M Place.
Yes, sir, welcome.
And, thank you. And I have a question.
And I have a question, or a statement that actually applies to both the water and sewer, and now that the water has been put off, I'd still like to make the statement.
I would encourage you to come on the 5th also about...
I'm going to be here, don't worry.
Thank you.
But I would like to ask or make the comment that I would like for you to maybe consider before we come back for that next meeting. And I noticed that in the statement that you released just now, you say that our recent water and sewer rate evaluation has nothing to do with the problems of the budget.
Yes, sir.
Are you telling me that none of this additional revenue that we're going to get from the rate increases is going to be used to repay that missing money?
Sir, it'd be used to apply toward the operation of the sewer and the water, sir. They're operating in the negative. Were you able to see the information that was shared with you?
Sure, I saw that. But what I'm asking is this, the money that disappeared that we can't...we don't know what happened to.
If I might interrupt, that's an entirely different subject, and there may be some misinformation here because there is no money missing, but we're talking about the sewer rates.
My question has to do with the rate increase that's going to be in. My question is, is any of that money that's generated by this rate increase going to be used to repay that missing money?
There is no missing money. This is a period of time when you may address the council, but I'm not going to let them engage in a conversation or to be answering questions or discussions.
Then I'll engage with you. The missing money...
There is no missing money.
Okay. Back in December of last year, you had a special meeting where you talked about...
Sir, now, it is my meeting, and I...Mr. Sigler is our attorney, and we're trying as to be as cordial as possible. If you would like...if you'll allow me, if you would like to discuss this matter further about December or something else, I'd be glad to, or Mr. Sigler would be glad to talk to you after the meeting. But right now, sir, with all due respect, we're here to talk about the sewer. So if you would like to talk to us about that?
I would like to ask one more thing. I'm simply asking, is any of this money being generated by the rate increase going to be used to pay back the rainy day fund that was...that the money was taken out to pay the bill for that water tower over there on Frisco Road?
I believe that I can answer the question, no. This money is used for the operation of the sewer system. If you'd allow me to inquire, Mr. Spain, is there future maintenance that's required for the sewer system?
Yes, sir.
The replacement of what?
Clarifiers and the membranes.
And it's estimated between $250,000 and $500,000?
Yes, sir.
And that will need to be done in the next two to three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I think you've answered the question, if you're saying that none of this money being generated by the rate increase is going to be used to repay the rainy day fund.
Sir, it's...Mr. Sigler, I don't...
We're going to have...we'll have it...I can discuss that matter with you after the meeting, and I'll be more than happy to. But right now is a period of time to address your concerns with the council, not to engage in conversation with regard to the sewer rate, proposed sewer rate increase. If there are more comments that you have, not questions, but comments that you would like the council to consider before they vote, now's the time to do it.
Okay. Well, this is my representative over here, and so he knows what my concern is, and I would like for him to consider it when you meet again to discuss the water.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your time coming, and we look forward to you coming next time, sir.
And I would also like to congratulate Ms. Yanda. She is the only one in this group that voted not to raid the rainy day fund, so thank you. Correct, that's correct.
Sir, if you'd have a seat, we appreciate you, and we'll look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Anyone else that would like to address the council about this matter, please come forward at this time? Okay. See no other discussion? Any discussion from the council? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smysdala?
Yes.
I believe that's all the business that we have, so with no other business...
I mean, I'm sorry, if we're going to consider the emergency now would be an appropriate time.
I'm sorry, and declaring an emergency, that was part of the...
Generally speaking, our agenda will have a separate item like a 5A.
Okay.
That didn't happen this time, but unless you...but you're still entitled to consider the emergency, even though there's not a separate 5A agenda item, because it is part of the agenda item.
Okay. At this time, I would submit to the council declaring an emergency regarding item number five and ask if I have a motion for that matter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smysdala?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Is all of our business done, Mr. Sigler?
Yes, sir.
With no other business before this council, we stand adjourned. And thank you very much for people coming and listening and sharing, and we look forward to your comments and input.